Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of November 29th, 2023. So good to see the room packed. Veterans, thank you so much for your service. We appreciate your dedicated service and your purchasing of our freedom. And I hope that all of you have had a very happy Thanksgiving, and we welcome you here tonight. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. We have the pleasure of having Pastor Matt Voorhees, who's the pastor of River Lakes Community Church, offer the invocation tonight. Pastor, thank you so much for your congregation's service in Africa. We look forward to very positive things coming out of that. Following the invocation, Arik Plate, a senior at Liberty High School, will lead us in the pledge. He has a 4.4 GPA, varsity tennis captain, Ford Dream Builder member, ASB student leadership and Link Crew. He volunteers with the League of Dreams, and he hopes to attend Princeton one day to study computer engineering or software development. I think we're in very, very good hands. Let's all rise, please.
You are kidding about those accolades. I was sitting next to such an impressive young man. Thank you for the privilege of being here with you, and I'd like to read from the prophet Daniel in the second chapter, verses 22 through 22. It says, "Blessed be the name of God forever and ever, to whom belong wisdom and might. He changes times and seasons; he removes kings and sets up kings. He gives wisdom to the wise and knowledge to those who have understanding. He reveals deep and hidden things. He knows what is in the darkness, and the light dwells with him." This is the God to whom I would like to offer this petition of this distinguished gathering for the most important business of this city that you all be undertaking here tonight. Let's pray. Our most merciful God, all of this belongs to you. It is you who made us. Our very breath is in your hands. We thank you for the beautiful city of Bakersfield that we are privileged to call home. And we're blessed by the numerous natural resources that you've entrusted to us so kindly, and we need your wisdom for how to steward what you've so graciously entrusted to us. We acknowledge that sin has broken what you made good, and that we need your compassion to care for the hurting in our city, the fatherless, the outcast, the vulnerable, and the downtrodden. Would you smile on this gathering of civic leaders? Would you help them, Lord, to make wise and compassionate decisions that will lead to human flourishing in the great city of Bakersfield? And may all that is done here tonight advance the fame of your great Son, Jesus, who became like us at Christmas, lived obediently in our place, was crucified for our sins at Calvary, rose victoriously from the dead, reigns in glory, sends his Spirit to empower his church, and is coming again to set all things right and to make everything new. We invite your leading here boldly in his name. Amen. Thank you.
Arik.
Thank you, Pastor, for that beautiful prayer. Thank you, Council, for inviting me here tonight, and thank you to all the veterans who were able to make it out. Now, would you all please join me in pledging our allegiance to a flag that represents so many who have fought and served for our country? Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Arik. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons and as a courtesy to others. No signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
Thank you. In keeping with Council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and for items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you're here with written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. If you're here on consent calendar hearing items 9A, 9, or 8A through B, and hearing item 9A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when that item, those items, are called later in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda.
Do we have any items for speaker? Do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received five speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speakers are Sonia Calero and Abigail Rivera.
Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor Go and members of the council. My name is Sofia Calero, and I'm here joined by my colleague, Abigail Rivera, and we're United Way of Central Eastern California. As, yeah, you might have noticed, we introduced ourselves with a new name. Indeed, we formally changed our name from United Way of Kern County because we are expanding our footprint into the communities of Northern San Bernardino, Mono and Inio Counties. Rest assured, our office is still here in the Bakersfield, located in 17 and 9th Street. Secondly, I wanted to shed some light about very important work that happens here in the city of Bakersfield every year. In partnership with Capgate, the IRS, and United Ways of California, we offer free tax preparation services to the community members of Bakersfield and Kern County through the VIDA program. For those of you who don't know about the VIDA program, this is a volunteer-based program where volunteers are professionally trained, IRS certified, to do taxes for family and residents of the community. With that, I'm going to pass it along to my colleague, Abigail Rivera.
Hello. As Sofia mentioned, my name is Abigail Rivera. I am the VIDA program coordinator at United Way. Before I share with you about the opportunities to get involved, I would like to share some data that we had for the 2022 tax season. Last tax season, we filed 2,370 tax returns, and 245 of those were item filers. We also, through those tax returns, we brought back $3.8 million in federal and state tax refunds for families in Kern County. Every year, we continue to increase the amount of families we help through our program. With the increased need, we continue to rely on the generous support of our volunteers. And with that, the packets that were shared with you, we do have our orientation and training dates. We appreciate your ongoing support with the program, and we appreciate any help that you provide with sharing this information with your district. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on your expansion. Next speaker, please. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think it's a secret at this point that I've spent the last nine months working with United Way of now Central Eastern California, and it's just been an honor to work alongside Sofia and Abigail and the rest of the team. So I just want to say thank you for coming out. The VIDA program, for those who have not seen it in action, is really amazing. It gives an opportunity for really anybody in our community to get IRS certified, trained, and prepared to do taxes of any kind. And so we're really excited to provide that as an opportunity for folks to learn, get familiar with taxes, and be able to provide that service and that advice to other folks who maybe need help. So I just wanted to say thank you. As they mentioned, we're currently doing orientations now. There's a pretty rigorous training program that individuals have to go through so that they know how to do it and they feel comfortable preparing folks' taxes, but it's a special opportunity. So if you can, go ahead and check us out online and get involved. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lisa Smith.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Smith, and I'm a resident of the unincorporated area near Stockdale and Stein. My neighbor is the trip construction in Andre Gonzalez's ward. I read Mr. Gonzalez's list of thanks in last Friday's Bakersfield Californian. I'm thankful for the Centennial Corridor, too. What I'm not thankful for is being ignored by the city when I ask for help with the construction's legacy. This is the bottom line. In order to deal with the emissions from Highway 99 and Highway 58, the second-most-used truck highway in the entire state of California, the city worked with San Joaquin Valley APCD to provide rebates for changing out wood-burning fireplaces. That's it. There is not even an additional air quality monitor being placed at any of the three schools within half a mile of this construction or this new freeway. The construction has also created at least seven vacant lots in my neighborhood, each from approximately two acres to half of residential lot size. This is the map, and I have copies for the record. Two of these lots have inadequate fencing that allows our kids to get to the canal. Two others are storage sites for composted manure and straw bales. Most of the larger ones have encampments, one of which Supervisor Flores's office was able to photograph during a recent neighborhood drive. I'm not aware that the city has proposed any plans for what is to become of these lots. I was talking regularly to Matt Column of the city attorney's office, but then the Kern River water flow issue came up. I haven't talked to Matt in over six weeks. I emailed all the council members last week, but so far, not one of you has responded to me. Mr. Gonzalez, you championed dealing with vacant lots in East Bakersfield, but that's exactly what's been left to us. I need you to care about what's happening to our neighborhood and talk to the people who live there.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for your comments today. I'm sorry I missed that email. I don't remember receiving it, but I'll look again in my email. I do care. I care a lot. I care a lot about the whole city and many of our communities, including unincorporated metro Bakersfield, which I believe, and it's a topic for another day, but I believe that we need to annex all of those unincorporated areas. And so regarding these remnant parcels, we do have a plan for these remnant parcels, and I'd like to ask Mr. Struckluse if we can schedule a meeting, three of us perhaps, with Ms. Smith, so that we can discuss what the plans are. And perhaps it's worthwhile for us to visit, along with our county partners, some of the residents within the community, so that they're all aware of what the progress is and what the plan is in the future after the Centennial Corridor opens up. I think it's really important that we communicate with the public so they're not left in the dark. But thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you for your comments. I really appreciate you having me here. Very much so. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next item, please. Next speaker.
Carter Beardsley, followed by Natalie Tarango.
Oh, Councilmember Gray.
Yeah, Mrs. Smith, I actually did return an email to you yesterday afternoon, and I do have concern for what you've been talking to us about. But I wanted to ask the city manager, what jurisdiction do we have over those properties since they're not part of, they're not annexed in?
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. I'll ask the public works director to correct or add anything that might be necessary. Those parcels actually were acquired for the project itself, and so we do have the ability to influence those. It's actually the contractor's responsibility to maintain those and to protect those, and so obviously in our responsibility to have oversight over our contractor. Several times over the last year, we have gone to the contractor and pointed out some deficiencies in areas that they need to shore up and clean up and get better, and they've done that. But that's the responsibility at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Well, welcome, Commissioner Beardsley.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Carter Beardsley, and I am honored to represent the students of Ward Four as the regular appointee on the Bakersfield Youth Commission. I am grateful to be joined here with Commissioner Tarango. Oh, I'm sorry. You guys catch, hold on, okay. I'm grateful to be joined here with Commissioner Tarango of Ward One, requesting that the city council and city manager's office would look into some renovation requests that we have for the already standing youth commission. We also collaborated with Commissioner Harjassol Brar, who is the mayor's appointee and chair of the youth commission. However, he is in Boston for a science research conference, so he'll be joining us in spirit and we're chairing him on. The first thing I'd like to bring to your guys' attention is the lack of funding towards the youth commission. Our mission as a commission is to empower the youth of Bakersfield, and we do so through annual projects. Unfortunately, without funding, we've been left to work in collaboration with local organizations in pre-existing events, leaving us seemingly unable to stand on our own two feet. In an effort to be able to rent our own space, advertise, and supply necessary resources for effectiveness, our first request is that during the mid-year funding, that $15,000 be allocated towards the youth commission. As a commission, we also struggle with the lack of communication between commissioners and those who appointed us. Most of us join the youth commission seeking to be a voice for the kids of Bakersfield. As young people in our town, we hold, what I believe to be very valuable insight that you cannot get anywhere else into what it's like to be a kid in Bakersfield. We requested an official line of communication between commissioners and the city council members be established so that the youth commission can be an advisory council that we have the opportunity to be. I appreciate your time, and I hope you can take our requests into consideration. The Bakersfield Youth Commission meets each fourth Monday of each month, and so if you're interested, I invite you to come out to our next meeting on December 18th to find out more about what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Beardsley. And Ms. Tarango. Commissioner.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilmembers. My name is Natalie Tarango. I'm a senior at Golden Valley High School and represent Ward One on the Bakersfield Youth Commission as a regular appointee. Commissioner Beardsley and I are here today to speak on improvements that we would like to see in the Bakersfield Youth Commission in order to take full advantage of the opportunities that the youth commission could open for the youth in our city. Firstly, we would like to request more city council involvement. We believe that there is a huge educational opportunity in which members of the youth commission can learn more about city government and what it takes to be a city council member. Interacting with city council members and representatives allows students to not only learn about a position they wish to pursue in the future, but also get the experience of meeting their city representatives. A lot of them don't know or have never spoken to their ward representatives who they actively represent on a youth council. This being said, we also request from city council members that they communicate with their student representatives. Every year, as a youth commission, we create a project to help the community, but sometimes their own ward representatives don't even know what's going on. Students come in with experience and background knowledge in the ward they live in. By communicating with their city council and ward representative, the council member can have a different perspective of the ward they represent and allow for the youth to have a voice in problems they see in their ward. Communicating with their city council representative can allow for a connection between the city council and the youth commission members. In addition, we would like to request an accessibility ramp in the city council south hall chambers. The lack of wheelchair accessibility not only restricts who can attend city council meetings, but also limits the ability for the youth commission to have meetings where city council meetings take place. Other commissions get to meet in city chambers, therefore we feel as though we are being excluded from this opportunity. This is due to our advisor and management assistant for the city of Bakersfield not having access into these chambers because there is no wheelchair ramp. We also have a student on the youth commission who needs the accessibility in order to enter the chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, both commissioners. I really appreciate your service, and it's been always great to see the projects that our youth commissioners have come up with and just to see you in action. And thank you for sharing those comments with us. Councilmember Arias has comment.
I just want to thank these two young individuals, and young leaders, I should say. Carter, you do some amazing work, not only on the youth commission. He's actually, I want to say, the longest-serving commissioner potentially on the commission, serving now his third year on the commission, is getting ready to found a new club on his high school campus, along with so many other things. And I know Natalie, in addition to the youth commission, wears many hats in the community, also serves alongside our friends over at the Greenfield Walking Group, amongst many other things that she does on campus. So I just want to thank you for coming tonight, and I think that this is a very reasonable list of requests. So I would like to ask, make a referral and ask staff to look into figuring out how they can better streamline communication between our two bodies. I know that other commissions have the ability to send correspondence to this body on particular matters. I think it's important that we hear from our youth on all issues that are discussed here on this dais. I also appreciate that they're pushing us to be more ADA accessible. I love that, and I think that it's absolutely time that we look into making that happen here in the council chambers. And I wanted to ask the city manager about the idea of potentially allocating some additional dollars to fund the events. I had the opportunity of sitting down with Carter a couple of weeks ago, and he shared some of the challenges they have financially to help support some of their projects and efforts and events in the community. So I just wanted to get your thoughts, especially as we head into mid-year budget. It seems to me that $50,000 isn't a whole lot to ask for.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember and Mayor and Council. I would agree that the funding allocation is not a large one. I would note that in the recent mid-year processes, we've actually had surplus one-time funding. We actually anticipate this mid-year to have very little one-time funding because our revenues have been pretty flat, and we've had some other impacts to sales tax pools, for example, at the county level. But we could take a look at that. I think we've talked about at the staff level, actually looking in the fiscal year budget process, these would be general fund dollars, I think, in full transparency, but again, not a huge ask from the general fund. So we can take a look at mid-year as those numbers firm up, but certainly, we've already been thinking about it for the next budget cycle.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you again for coming tonight.
Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Carter and Natalie. I know it's not easy speaking in front of the council or speaking on a mic, so you deserve all of the recognition and props first for joining us here, and I know you two have plenty of public speaking experience, but I wanted to commend you for speaking in front of a pretty large crowd today as well. I want to join my colleague, Councilmember Arias, in echoing his referral. I do, from my own youth commissioner, good news, I've received the same feedback that while this is a huge honor to serve on the youth commission for the city of Bakersfield, and granted, these students serve in other student leadership roles within different clubs, different organizations, on their school campuses, there is a legitimacy in serving with the city of Bakersfield, and I do think that the youth should also learn the fiscal power and utilizing our, you know, public tax dollars and different ideas that they have as the youth of our city, as the future, and for them to one day replace us on this council, and I think that should absolutely be a reality. So I want to echo my support for the referral and want to make sure that we find it to be a priority when it comes to our mid-year budget planning time, that our youth commission is strongly considered for having a dollar allocation as well. So, thank you.
Councilmember, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Great job, Carter and Natalie. Thank you so much. What a wonderful presentation and wonderful letter. I'm a little nervous for my job right now after hearing you speak, but no, fantastic. Here's the deal. So, you know, we're up against a few issues right now, as you know, with budget constraints. And so I think what we ought to do is look at council contingency, since we have that already budgeted for this fiscal year, and see what funds are still available so that we can access those to help with the youth commission. But in turn, I'm going to ask a favor, I'm going to have a request for you and for the whole commission, is to come back to this body within the next 90 days with a budget, with a specific budget of how you'd like to allocate those dollars, and a plan, some priorities. I'm incredibly impressed with your leadership and your vision for our city and for our community, and I'd like the whole body, the whole youth commission, to come back to this council and deliver a presentation. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I'm a little confused on the accessible city hall chambers. This chamber is accessible. Is this the one you're talking about, or I'm confused on that, so...
Councilmember Smith, the commission used to meet in here before, so it's accessible.
We have a ramp out front. We have a ramp in the back, so we are accessible here, if that's the question. Councilmember, if I may, just jump in. I agree with you, this is an accessible site. I believe there is some history on, you know, some staff determinations and preferences on where to hold the meetings. We'll go back and clarify that with staff, but this is an ADA accessible facility. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Russell Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Go, members of the council. Russell Johnson with Common Sense Consulting, here this evening to share with you the story of hardship of one of my clients. He is currently a city vendor. He's trying to put up a wall around a vacant lot, but he can't get a permit. Can't get a permit because the system's been down for three weeks. So we appreciate the fact that the city staff has been working diligently to implement an online system. We appreciate the fact that the system will eventually be faster and will streamline the whole development process. That's a good thing. We want that to happen. Here's the challenge. When the software breaks down and you can't get a permit to put up a wall, something needs to be fixed. And staff is trying. Got some encouraging news today, but I'm going to ask the council, it's time to give some direction that when the software breaks and you can't and commerce stops and construction crews go to Shafter, Firebaugh, Fresno, because you can't get a permit, it really is slowing commerce down. So some direction to staff that, you know, when the software breaks, old school's okay. Paper still works. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Councilmember Gray.
Well, good evening, Russell. Thank you for coming and speaking in front of our council tonight. We've had an... We've had an ongoing situation with planning and development and permits. And I know that when I first came on the council, they were talking about doing all this, you know, online and how it was going to streamline, it was going to be easier on our contractors. But receiving a phone call today than last week, it's an ongoing problem, whether it's if it's up and working or if it's not. We've got to, I totally agree with Mr. Johnson, we've got to get this situation straightened out, especially for our smaller contractors, that every job that they do, that they try to pull a permit on, is their bottom line. This is not about just big developers trying to get permitting. These are guys every day out there. A lot of them are working with their tools. They don't have the technology because they're carpenters, they're tradesmen, you know, they're not into all this. We've got to figure out a way to get this fixed. I've had a meeting at the city already with Mr. Boils and with Mr. Burns and Assistant City Manager. This has been an ongoing situation that somehow, Mr. Clegg, we've got to get it fixed. And so I really welcome the fact that Mr. Johnson came tonight to bring more light on this subject because it is a big problem out there that's hurting our contractors. So thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to affirm my councilmembers' comments. I was, I had to jump out of the shower getting ready for this meeting to take a call from a very upset developer that with exactly the same problem, it isn't just a wall. We're talking major real estate projects all over the city are being held up. They can't submit for improvement plans, they can't for tentative maps. I mean, it's a big problem. So, and we've had ongoing glitches. When you start a new program, I've been through this, debugging it can take forever. That's just the way software is, and that's why we all get nervous when we select a vendor for software because it's always an experiment. But I do think, Mr. Clegg, you and your department heads probably need to sit down and really take a hard look, is this system going to work? I was in a situation, I hate to say how many years ago, 1983, where we put in a big, in the days of beginning to build computers, software custom-written for our developers. Our chairman said, "We're going to be the leading people." He brought in eight people. We were going to customize a huge development company on our own, write all the software, back in, well, two years later, we fired everyone and wrote it all off and went back to, because we finally had to admit it isn't going to work. It just isn't working. So I'm not saying that's where you are, but I think you have to honestly evaluate. You know, is it going to work? Can we really fix it? Or do we have to scrap the system? Because, you know, we've been, it hasn't worked yet. And we can only debug things for so long. So I just ask you, you know, really look hard at this because we don't want to be, six months from now, we don't want to have developers coming in still saying, you know, we can't get our maps processed, our improvement plans, our grading plans, because those are jobs, and we really need them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to agree with councilmember Gray and councilmember Freeman. Time is money. Time is money. And there are so many business owners and property owners that I'm representing in downtown Bakersfield who are trying to make projects happen and who are frustrated, very frustrated, at least half a dozen at this point. And they're spending real money on, still have to pay rent, still have to pay the bills somehow, and they're not able to open. And so we need, we have a problem. We need to fix it as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for bringing this to the attention of the full council. I know there's been a lot of conversations that many of us have had on the side with staff, but we need to address this now. Thank you.
Next item, next speaker, please. City Clerk.
Jackie Morris. Good evening. My name is Jackie Morris, and I'm speaking on the proposed ordinances relating to dog ownership. I have several concerns. One of my concerns for this overhaul is the city already can't enforce the existing laws because of the lack of manpower. The people that don't obey the current laws more than likely won't obey the new laws. The people that will be policed under the new laws are those that actively try to comply by registering their dogs, getting their animals licensed either as sterilized or intact, and acquiring a breeding permit. The backyard breeders and puppy mills either won't bother to obtain the permits, or obtaining the permits will legitimize them to the general public. The puppy mills will not want to obtain a license because it would cut into their profits. Responsible breeders don't make profits from breeding. A license to breed puts an added burden on those trying to breed responsibly. Only the responsible owners and breeders will be affected by having to undergo the inspections. Requiring an inspection of the premises of anyone who breeds or owns more than three dogs is a violation of a person's right to privacy and private property. Requiring dogs to be spayed or neutered on second impoundment opens the door for vengeful neighbors to target a person that they don't like. Requiring puppies to get the rabies vaccine at three months is unreasonable because many veterinarians recommend that puppies not receive that vaccine until they are four months old. These are just some of my concerns about the proposed legislation that would overhaul the city's laws regarding dog owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Any other, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Go, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items 7A through 7AP for approval. A staff memorandum was provided regarding item 7C, transmitting correspondence. Another staff memorandum was provided for item 7B, transmitting the signed agreement.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member of the council wish to recuse themselves from an item? Does any councilmember wish to pull an item for separate consideration? I actually have two requests tonight, one from councilmember Freeman to pull item 7AN and from councilmember Smith, 7AP. With that, I'll make the motion to approve all other consent calendar items.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, item AN, councilmember Freeman.
Yeah. I just wanted to ask a question about this. It says we're accepting the compliance report for park impact fees. We have previously discussed that we have a problem with park impact fees, that they're not enough to cover the cost of the parks, that with the inflation of the last four years, which has been monumental, I mean, it is probably, construction costs for these types of items could be up at least 50%, maybe more. I talked to a lot of contractors, you said you wouldn't believe what it costs when we bid things out. It's just, it's an unbelievable number, construction inflation. But so, we said that we have about, I can't remember, it was nine parks in various forms that we've already committed. People have already started paying as they close houses. They are, they're paying for that park, five or 10,000, whatever, but they've paid, we have a contract with those homeowners. So we eventually have to build their parks. We probably have to modify for the future, the size of the park, what goes in it to bring costs back in line and come up with a different, we're going to have to have a different park fee program. We might raise a little bit, but houses are unaffordable now, so we can't raise it much. But can we certify when we haven't yet said, for these parks, here's our program? And I imagine we'll have to, we have to, we have to have a cost put in. We've all debated, what is a real, is it really a million an acre or three-quarters million, but it's a big number now. Watch the little chart, watch the subsidy, over how many years? It seems to me we have to have some plan to say we're in compliance when we know, right now, we can't build those parks. Because, make a commitment, it's going to be in our budgets every year, because that's a priority commitment before we do new things like this. So I just wanted to, I'm not against this, I'm just saying, can we really say we're in compliance with the problem we have?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Freeman. Let me first just reiterate an agreement with you that we are in the process of evaluating the park fee amount, and we'll come back to council early in 2024 with some recommendations about how we move forward with the Parks Master Plan update that, you know, we recently had a workshop on, and how we need to adjust those park fees and probably park sizes, park standards to meet, you know, some of those realities that we have. So that is coming, and it is coming fairly soon. What this report is about is every year, and actually, tonight, you see just a couple on the consent agenda at your December meeting, there will probably be more of these same items. Every year, we have requirements with the state to just, it's basically like a financial audit, that we're reporting back to the state, how much monies were received, how were they expended, is it compliant with state code, how they are expended. It's mostly like, you know, our annual financial audits, that we're just reporting back to the state, how those funds have been used, and that it is appropriate according to state government code. So it's independent, you know, whether those fees collected are enough to, you know, build our parks is a separate consideration than just this is our report back to the state that we're meeting the legal requirements for the acceptance and use of those funds.
Okay, well, then, I'll support accepting and filing this. While I've got the mic, one more, one more thing about park maintenance is I, actually, I, you may not have even seen it yet, I wrote a memo to Mr. Lachlaus today, and I'm not even sure he's in charge of these agendas when we put him together, but one of the items in here is accepting about seven maintenance districts, you know, different portions of land. I just want to really ask that in all the future ones, because these come, every meeting we accept more, could they please say which ward it's in? Just say, except for this, Ward 7, Ward 3. I'd like to know if it's in my ward, where the development is. So if you could just add that piece of information every time you say on the consent agenda, we're going to accept these areas in. I'd appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Freeman, is your support indicative of a motion?
Okay. The motion is to accept item AN. The other thing was just a request.
Yes. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, councilmember Smith, item AP.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is in Ward 3, so I will not make the motion. I will leave that to my colleague, Mr. Weir. But I did want to point out that it shows our continuing commitment to the quality of life improvements in Bakersfield. This is a $13 million project to complete Mesa Marin Phase 3, and 10 million of it comes from PSVS, that, again, we thank the voters for passing that back in 2018. But we've also spent $37 million almost at Kaiser Permanente Sports Village, and we've, over the last few years, went back and spent millions of dollars rehabbing our existing parks and catching up for deferred maintenance that we'd had for so long. So I'm excited that it shows our commitment, and I think the whole community has benefited and continues to benefit from these, and I look forward to MLK, which we're, you know, working on and reimagining that. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Smith. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo the sentiment that was articulated by councilmember Smith in that what an awful opportunity that we have as a city to invest in our parks and to provide such an incredible amenity for all of the residents of the citizens of Bakersfield. And it's thanks to the citizens of Bakersfield in approving the Public Safety and Vital Services Initiative. And I just can't imagine where we would be as a city today were it not for that approval. And it's interesting to wonder how we would fund this project were it not for PSVS. And so, very thankful that we're able to make this investment tonight, and looking forward to future investments, in particular, the MLK Community Center, as we look towards the future for recreational opportunities and park spaces for all residents of our city.
Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mesa Marin has been quite a project to deal with. When I was first elected to the city council, about eight months later, I had the opportunity to open Mesa Marin with four fields sitting out there all by itself. It looked lonely, actually, so that was awesome. And to move on to the second phase, we were out in the second phase, but we didn't have enough land, or we needed a piece of land where we could actually make it all work. And so we came up with the vice that we actually swapped land to make that thing whole, and it came, it came to be. And it's, it's an amazing facility, and with all the other improvements that have been made to it, it really is becoming an item for that side of town. Now we're going into the third phase, and with the third phase coming in, we will be able to have a pretty good-sized tournaments out at Mesa Marin, which brings in tourists, it brings in food, it brings in tax money. It really is a big item, and Mesa Marin's kind of a cash cow. So I'm very happy that it's coming along, even though that first pitch I blew out and I threw out, it was a strike, by the way. That was 17 years ago. So things take time. By golly, we're getting there. I move approval.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Consent calendar public hearing items 8A through 8AB for approval. A staff memorandum was provided regarding item 8A, transmitting correspondence.
Thank you. It's now time for the consent calendar hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all the items listed under consent calendar hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the agenda. At this time, I'll open consent calendar public hearing items 8A through B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony, only to remove the matter from the consent calendar hearing. Seeing none? Does any councilmember wish to remove an item from the consent calendar hearing? Remove, remove. Go ahead and make your comment if you need, can that wait? Go ahead and make your comment. Councilmember Freeman. Well, we have to pull it. We're removing it if you want to make a comment, councilmember, so we'll pull it.
I would just say, if it's a brief comment, a sentence or two, do you just have a sentence or two, councilmember Freeman? or two, Councilmember Freeman?
Well, it was, I want to be sure I know which project, if this is in my ward.
Okay, just a question, sure.
And if this is, I'm, I'm not speaking against the project or, or for it. Let's see, this is the, this is the project where we're doing a general plan amendment and zone change. Be sure I get this right on the agenda. Here, yeah, and this is for 497 small lot program. When this came, it came before us previously, or almost came before us, I had been sort of against the configuration of the subdivision. It had no green space, it didn't have a nice layout, it wouldn't be a nice place to live. And the developer went back and reengineered, redesigned the program. And I had asked that someone do a site plan and show us, well, what does the new one look like? You know, I, I read that now it's got some green space, it has, it's a nicer plan, apparently staff supported it, Planning Commission, but at the time I'd asked, would someone please, since my ward was, show me what you did, I was the one objecting to it, I, to this day, I don't know what the new one looks like. No one will show me a site plan, I get nothing. And I just thought maybe it'd be nice to see a site plan of the project we're approving since it was reworked to make it into a better project. Is, is one available?
Madam City Attorney.
Councilmember, Councilmember Freeman, apparently there's one in the presentation, so we'll have to pull this item and it'll have to go to the end. I'm sorry. Time out, this is inappropriate. This item is now being pulled.
You go ahead and sit down. We're pulling this item, it's going to go to the end after the regular hearings. Okay, we'll come back to that. So.
That's great, so we can just go ahead now and close item, item 8A.
Closing item 8A. And now, Vice Mayor.
Move to approve consent calendar public hearing item 8A.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Public hearing item.
Thank you. Our next item is public hearings. This is a continuation of public hearing item 9A that was originally opened at the November 8, 2023 City Council meeting. The hearing was opened and at that time, the applicant requested that the hearing be continued to today in order to provide time to respond to approximately 11,000 pages of comments received from various groups, including the appellant, in the days leading up to the said hearing. I'll now explain how the hearing will be conducted. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side. So it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to staff's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's the clock on the TV screens behind me which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and after 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up, quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. And just as a reminder, applause isn't allowed during this portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public hearing item 9A, continuation of a public hearing to consider adoption of resolutions concerning two appeals by Channel Law Group, LLP, on behalf of their client, Progress for Bakersfield Veterans LLC, regarding the Department of Veterans Affairs Community-Based Outpatient Clinic located at 5512 Newtonson Drive. Number one, appeal of Planning Commission's certification of an environmental impact report and number two, appeal of Planning Commission's approval of site plan review number 21-0399. Two staff memorandums have been provided for this item, one transmitting the comments by the applicant and the second one transmitting materials provided to the clerk's office by the appellant. These copies were voluminous, staff had, did not have an opportunity to make enough copies available for both the public and the council. Copies are available here at the clerk's desk for review and will be made available at the clerk's office after the meeting.
Thank you. Anything from staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, for the court reporter, Paul Johnson, Planning Director. If I could get the slide up. You know, in preparing these slides, I realized this is my seventh time I presented some form of this project, either in front of the Planning Commission or City Council. And so the first couple of slides are repetitive of the November 8th, so I'm going to kind of skim through those real quick and then I'll, I'll provide a little bit more background information on the November 8th hearing and where we are from there. So again, this is an appeal to the Planning Commission's certification of an environmental impact report and Planning Commission's approval of a site plan review that would facilitate a VA community-based outpatient clinic, otherwise known as a CBOC. It is located near Olive Drive in Newtonson, just west of Highway 99. Approximately 10 acres, under 40,000 square foot building, open Monday through Friday with no overnight stays. It did, you may recall this slide from before, it did go through the site plan review process. It then went through the California Environmental Quality Act Review, or SEQA. An environmental impact report was prepared that was certified by the Planning Commission, which then allowed the Development Services Director to approve the site plan review. Both of those were repealed, taking us to the November 8th meeting when your council considered both appeals and then continued to today. And again, as was noted, at the November 8th meeting, there were just over 11,000 pages of documents submitted. Public testimony was taken and at the request of the applicant's legal counsel, the project was continued to tonight's meeting. Subsequently, Channel Law Group provided comments rece, that were received just after that meeting, which staff incorporated into the administrative report for this meeting. Additionally, a blue memo was prepared and distributed yesterday, transmitting comments received after publication of the agenda. The Veterans Affairs Greater Los Angeles Healthcare System submitted comments stating that deactivating the zig, the existing CBOC or constructing the new CBOC would not impact any historic properties and offered consultation. The memo also included a response letter from the applicant's legal team, Rutan and Tucker, addressing the 11,000 pages of documents submitted at the November 8th hearing and Channel Law Group's subsequent 120-page letter. City staff, acting as the lead agency, along with its consultant, reviewed the Rutan and Tucker comments and agreed with the findings, leading to the amendment of four mitigation measures. It is relevant to note that SEQA empowers the lead agency to consider public comments and make revisions to mitigation measures accordingly. Therefore, a revised mitigation, monitoring and reporting program was attached to that memo. Following the distribution of yesterday's memo, additional comments were received and transmitted in a second blue memorandum. This memo includes additional comments from Dick Albright, supporting the project, TMB Planning, the city's consultant, acknowledging agreement with the Rutan and Tucker responses, CSUB, Department of Biology, opposing the project, and Channel Law Group, representing Progress for Bakersfield Veterans LLC, the appellant, submitted over 2,200 pages of documents. Staff and the consultant reviewed the documentation and found that the comments to be duplicative. Therefore, your commission, or excuse me, your council has two options to consider on the appeal. You may deny the appeals and certify the EIR and approve the site plan review. A yes vote on this type of motion would mean the project could be constructed. You could also uphold the appeals and decertify the EIR and deny the site plan review. A yes vote on this motion would mean the project cannot be constructed as proposed. Now, the appellant may attempt to cast a climate of doubt on the adequacy of the EIR in the site plan review. However, I assure you without a doubt that the EIR has gone through California's most stringent environmental review and is adequate and the site plan review meets the city's minimum development standards. With that, staffing recommends a motion be made on option one, to deny the appeals and certify the EIR and approve the site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. As previously stated, this is a continuation of public hearing item 9A from November 8, 2023 City Council meeting. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? In other words, those that are opposed to approving the EIR and site plan review for the project. If so, please come forward, step to the microphone, identify yourself and proceed.
All right. And just for some procedure, I'll get 15 minutes, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Total time.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Jamie Hall, I'm an environmental and land use attorney with Channel Law Group. I'm here tonight representing the appellant, Progress for Bakersfield Veterans. My client has submitted a robust set of letters and expert reports outlining the legal deficiencies with the environmental impact report that the city has prepared for the project. My client has also submitted correspondence explaining in detail why the city cannot make the required findings to approve the site plan review for the project. I trust you've had an opportunity to carefully review these materials. In response, the applicant submitted a lengthy letter including several new expert reports. We were first made aware of the, of this submittal yesterday afternoon around 2:35. Even the staff report states that the applicant's letter was not yet available at the time that the staff report was published. My client and its experts have not had a meaningful opportunity to consider this new evidence. Therefore, my client is requesting that this hearing be continued. My client respectfully contends that the law actually mandates a continuance under these circumstances. Appellants challenging adjudicative land use entitlements are entitled to a fair hearing under state law. This is codified at Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1094.5. Fair hearing requirements include a meaningful opportunity to present evidence contrary to a land use application and a meaningful consideration of that evidence. This was expressly stated in the 1994 case Natural Resources Defense Council versus Fish and Game Commission. If this hearing is not continued to allow my client a meaningful opportunity to consider this newly introduced evidence, then my client will be denied a fair hearing in violation of the law. However, if this matter is nonetheless allowed to proceed, I do want to state on the record the numerous reasons why the EIR is inadequate. They include the following, and I bucketed these into categories. Biological issues. One, the EIR fails to recognize the California Department of Fish and Wildlife as a responsible and trustee agency. Two, the EIR fails to recognize the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as a responsible agency. Three, the EIR fails to disclose that modification of the project site without an incidental take term, permit would violate the Endangered Species Act. Four, the EIR fails to disclose that the VA and the developer's consultant concluded in 2020 that the project would adversely affect the kit fox. Five, the EIR fails to address expiration of the Metropolitan Bakersfield Habitat Conservation Plan and the city's discussions about a new HCP. Six, the EIR fails to address additional consultation required by U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service under the Endangered Species Act. Seven, the EIR fails to address consultation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in the manner directed by CDFW. Eight, the EIR fails to address U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service recommendations relating to incidental take of the kit fox. Nine, the EIR fails to include biological surveys for the kit fox prepared prior to the developer's roto-tilling of the project site. Ten, the EIR fails to include focus surveys for the kit fox, Swainson's hawk and the crotches bumblebee as, oh, and as directed by CDFW.
We have a court reporter here, so can you just slow down just a little bit, please?
Sure.
Do you need him to go back?
The EIR fails to include focus surveys for the kit fox, Swainson's hawk and the crotches bumblebee and as directed by CDFW. Eleven, the EIR fails to disclose the TRIPS program report. Twelve, the EIR fails to disclose proposed development of the Hagaman flyover site. Thirteen, the EIR is inconsistent with the city's own standard biological mitigation conditions. Fourteen, the 2021 EIR biological field work was performed at the height of a drought resulting in an inaccurate baseline. Fifteen, the EIR's biological field work was performed in October for all species resulting in an inaccurate baseline. Sixteen, the EIR failed to disclose time of day or duration of field work affecting accuracy of baseline. Seventeen, the EIR failed to disclose or include qualifications of the fieldwork biologists affecting adequacy of baseline information. Eighteen, the EIR failed to disclose prior field work by the EIR biological consultant on the same project site in 2020. Nineteen, the EIR failed to disclose a report by the EIR biological consultant on a nearby property with different conclusions about the project site. Twenty, the EIR failed to disclose or consider cumulative impacts of the Hagaman flyover project. Twenty-one, the EIR failed to disclose or consider cumulative impacts of proposed development of approximately 80 acres south of the project site. Twenty-two, the EIR failed to disclose cumulative impacts of proposed development of adjacent land owned by the developer. Twenty-three, the EIR failed to disclose cumulative impacts of proposed development of adjacent land owned by Walmart. Twenty-four, the EIR field work used inadequate transects. Twenty-five, the EIR failed to disclose the city's own database regarding presence of kit fox. And twenty-six, the EIR failed to require any habitat mitigation, even though habitat loss is the primary threat to species of concern. Second categories of issues I want to go over with regard to the inadequacy of the EIR concern traffic issues. There's 15 issues. Number one, the EIR failed to disclose a prior report by the same consultant on the same project with different trip generation numbers. Two, the EIR includes insufficient information about project trip generation. Three, the EIR failed to include required analysis of Highway 99 and other intersections. Four, the EIR includes insufficient information about project trip generation. Five, the EIR includes insufficient information about traffic growth rates. Six, the EIR uses incorrect project traffic volumes. Seven, the EIR fails to consider cumulative traffic impacts. Eight, the EIR included unexplained adjustments to traffic data. Nine, the EIR included incorrect data regarding level of service. Ten, the EIR failed to properly address the city's standards regarding intersections performing below level of service D. Eleven, the EIR failed to properly address the city's standards regarding reductions of level of service. Twelve, the EIR failed to include required mitigation. Thirteen, the EIR failed to include recommendations for other mitigation. Fourteen, the EIR used an unauthorized and arbitrary VMT significance threshold. And fifteen, the EIR failed to disclose significantly different information about existing traffic included in the initial study for the Hagaman flyover. The next category of environmental resources are greenhouse gas emissions. Number one, the EIR improperly credits the project with a 100% reduction of GHG of the existing VA clinic. And number two, the EIR improperly claims that mitigation of GHG impacts is not feasible. Next category, tribal cultural resources. One, the city failed to engage in adequate tribal consultation as required by both state and federal law. The next category of environmental resources, land use and planning. One, the site plan application includes an incomplete project description. Two, the project is prohibited under Bakerfield's general plan. Three, the project is prohibited under the zoning ordinance. Four, the city has not properly considered land use compatibility with Meadows Field Airport. Five, site plan review decision lacks evidence of required committee review. Six, the project is prohibited without a subdivision permit or approval. Seven, the project requires approval by Kern County of required street improvements east of the city slash Kern County boundary. Eight, the project- Eight, the project requires approval by Kern County of contemplated storm drain improvements east of the project site. Nine, the EIR failed to address the project's inconsistencies with Bakersfield's water use ordinance. And ten, the EIR failed to address health and safety issues arising from proximity to heavy industrial uses to the southeast. Next environmental resource category is noise. Number one, the city failed to properly consider noise impacts from Meadows Field Airport. And number two, the city failed to consider railroad and freeway noise. Next environmental resource category is hazards and hazardous waste. Number one, the EIR fails to address the risk of catastrophic explosion of industrial uses southeast of the project site. Number two, the EIR fails to address direction from Caljum regarding an existing oil and gas well. Three, the EIR fails to address direction from DTSC regarding lead and pesticide contamination in soils. And next environmental resource category or issue is cumulative impacts. As I previously mentioned, the EIR fails to address cumulative impacts of adjacent projects, of projects within the city, and projects within unincorporated Kern County, as well as the impacts of regional projects. And with regard to the alternatives analysis, number one, the EIR improperly credits the project with a 100 reduction of GHG of the existing VA clinic. Number two, the EIR's conclusion that alternatives are not feasible because the VA might not agree to them is an improper post hoc rationalization. And number three, the EIR improperly claims that mitigation of GHG impacts is not feasible. For all of these reasons, my client respectfully submits that the environmental impact report is fatally flawed and deficient, and therefore the city cannot approve to certify this project or approve the site plan review. And so we respectfully request that you, number one, continue this hearing to allow us to review the new materials that were submitted and made first available to us a little over 24 hours ago. And number two, if the continuance is not granted, that you grant the appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Madam City Attorney, any input? Thank you. Is there anyone else we... Oh, did we already hit 15? Yeah. Is there... I think there were a few more minutes left. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition against Staff's recommendation? Seeing none? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support that's in favor of Staff's recommendation? In other words, those that are in favor of approving the EIR and site plan review for the project? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council members, my name is Alan Fenstermacher. I was last before you on this project about two and a half years ago. I represent the project applicant SASD. I want to be brief because, again, I think you've heard many, many things about this project. First thing I'd like to address is this request for continuance. There's no obligation to grant that request. It's a theme I'm going to touch on is credibility. It's hard to take that request as serious when it is submitted with 2,000 more pages of documents today by the person making that request. My letter was 20 pages with five attachments. It's about 200 pages long. It responds to over 11,000 documents provided three weeks ago, which I painstakingly reviewed over the last three weeks, including over Thanksgiving. 200 pages... To review 200 pages in 24 hours would be quite easy. I wish that was my task. So there's no unfairness here, and really, there's been two years to make these comments. There's the NOP issued on the EIR. There's the draft EIR. There's the final EIR. The letters from PVV were bare bones. They purposefully saved everything until the days before the last hearing, including emails that were submitted today in their letter they've had in their possession since October, as they've admitted in their letter. It's all a tactic to produce an endless loop of continuances, response to comments, response to comments. At some point, we're fighting... We have a food fight with the same food we're throwing back and forth, and it's because delay is a win for PVV because they get to keep their facility longer and their rent longer. Delay is as good as a denial, and that's the only reason the continuance is asked for. It's not a good faith request. I think your staff has done a wonderful job explaining why the EIR is sufficient, and I would posit that no 30,000-square-foot medical office has ever been put through a stronger wringer and been more stringently opposed. You could probably put a medical office on half dome, and you'd have less voluminous comments in opposition. And that's not because there's a concern about biological impacts. The only person in this room opposing this project is PVV's attorney. There's not a single Sierra Club member. There's not a single person in this room that actually thinks there's going to be an adverse impact on the environment. There's an adverse impact on a pocketbook, and you have to consider the credibility and the source of these comments. And my client is eager to show this roomful of veterans and the many others in this city how it can serve them. So please approve this project and deny this meritless appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. ... All right, just a reminder. Reminder, applause is not allowed during this portion. I know you're enthusiastic about it. Thank you, Mr. Fenstermacher. Anyone else who wants to speak in favor of Staff's recommendation? This would be the time.
Good evening. My name is Randy McCormick. I'm the principal biologist with McCormick Biological, and I have come to just speak for the record that I've reviewed the biological resource evaluations. I've reviewed the EIR, and I think that we've identified all of the impacts. The mitigation measures do reduce those impacts to less than significant. I do have another letter here that addresses some of the additional comments, and it is addressing kit fox in particular, and I wanted to give that to the city clerk so that you could have that for the record.
Please do. Thank you. Anything further after you present that? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support of Staff's recommendation? Welcome. Please identify yourself.
Hello. My name is Guy Anderson. So basically, I was asked to speak because I'm here representing the younger generation of veterans. So I am a combat veteran. I have been to Afghanistan twice, and then after 10 years of service, I was medically retired. And when I came back to my hometown, I was born and raised here in Bakersfield, I went into the VA clinic that is currently here and up and running. First of all, getting an appointment, it's usually about four to six weeks before I'm able to get any sort of appointment. And then when I went to the behavioral health side of the VA clinic here because of what I was medically retired for was combat PTSD, so I have to go seek out behavioral health, they gave me a psychiatrist that I have never met in person, not one time. It's all over the phone, and basically he just says, "What's your problem? Here's some drugs. All right, I'll talk to you in a month." Because he's in Los Angeles. And then needing a counselor or a therapist, you know, anyone to discuss my matters, they have nothing here. The VA just told me, it's like, "Well, you have to go to LA. You have to go to LA." Well, I'm a single father of two. I can't go to Los Angeles. And they're like, "Okay, we'll see what we can do." They contracted, and they gave me a counselor here locally. Great woman, however, she's not a veteran. She doesn't... She's not used to veteran issues, so basically when I need to talk about combat problems and that I suffer from, she has no idea what I am talking about. And I got basically no help at all, and that was it. The VA canceled my referral with her, and then they just put me on a waiting list. And so now I currently do not have a therapist or counselor, and it's been about five, about five to six months that I have gone without treatment. And anytime I try to see my doctor, like, I have to wait, you know, four, five, six weeks at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and thank you for your service. We have about just under nine minutes left for this portion, so just keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members for allowing us to speak tonight. All of us here have signed a pledge to defend our country, Constitution, and Bill of Rights up until the given our lives. It's not an easy life, but it's one that we chose, and we're very proud of. One of the things that really upsets us is the fact that we're full of promises, and they make us feel like it's going good, and they pull the rug underneath us. Now, Councilman Andre Gonzalez, you said, "Time is money." That's true, but time is also deadly to the veterans who cannot get the help they require. You know, in Bakersfield, we were told that back in 2010, Congress approved the clinic here. That's 14 years. And yet I hear the opposition attorney come up and say that they haven't had time to prepare. 14 years, you're almost ready to retire in the service, let alone prepare. But the thing about that we want to say is that we deadly need help in Kern County. As my colleague said, psychiatrists... My psychiatrist retired earlier this year, and I haven't seen psychiatrists since. They've canceled three appointments. One of the things I would add that he said, "We don't know what PTSD either because we experience it, wake up in the middle of the night scared or dead, don't know where in the hell you're at." And you can't find somebody to even talk to you about that. We do have psychiatrists we've had in the past that did... are very helpful. They can get stuff out of you that you never thought that you had inside of you because you've kept it inside for so damn long. But the thing that I want to say is that we had one time so many complaints here that they sent the VA people from Los Angeles down here to talk to us. And I stood up, and I told them, I said, "You know what is really upsetting? Is that you try and get help, you try and get help, you contact, you finally meet somebody, they give you a business card, you call it, nobody answers. You leave a message, they don't respond." And then when I tried to get help from up there for a prosthesis, I finally called somebody and said, "What the hell's going on?" Well, their message will only take 30 messages before it cut off. 30 messages for Los Angeles VA Hospital? Are you kidding me? So this is the kind of stuff that we're going against on here. And one of the things that really, really gets us is, we don't mind having to wait our turn. I mean, we... All of us have stood in line time and time again before. But the thing about it is that we have over 50,000 veterans in Kern County, thousands of them served in combat. And the veterans of foreign wars, I was a past district commander, and I had 10 VFW posts underneath me. Every one of those veterans served in combat because you cannot be a member of the VFW unless you served in combat. We've helped a lot of them. We speak to each other, we talk, and it's almost like a PTSD survival group. My psychiatrist says... My buddy's smiling, all these guys are in PTSD groups. Psychiatrist says, "No, you're one-on-one with me." Well, hell, I'm in one-on-one with a TV screen now. But it's just... It's just, I mean, all we ask was for help. We've been promised something from 2010 that Congress approved, and everybody's been dragging their feet, and the veterans... The only thing we're going to be doing is dragging bodies pretty soon if we don't start getting some help in this place. Now, if you have never served to defend this nation, you'll never know. But if you served in combat to defend this nation, you'll never forget. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, would you please state your name?
James Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, and thank you for your service. We have five minutes left. How many people still want to speak in support? I'm just trying to gauge. One, two, three, four, five. So we have about five minutes left, so you might want to keep that in mind if there are five people who want to speak.
Let me try to keep this short.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Dick Albright. I think you have my letter, my email. I'd like to put a historical context on this to some extent, if I may. I have a letter that was written by our friend Kevin McCarthy, 7 October, 2019, and he reflected, "Congress authorized over a decade ago the public law 111-182." That's 15 years now that he has said, "I write you to express my deep frustration with the VA's unacceptable delays." This is to the VA. The bottom line basically here is that he would like to have had some information, feedback on a timeline. You're watching the timeline here, and nothing has happened. So my input basically is that I would like to see something happen positively because the kit fox is important, but these guys out here are the subject. They're the subject matter. They're the people that are involved in this particular program that has stopped. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Albright. Thank you for your service. We have about three minutes left. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, Margot. My name's Ben Patton. I'm an Army veteran, and I don't have statistics or legal briefs or anything like that, but I got 12 years of working with veterans here in this county and seeing what they need and arranging transportation for them to go to LA and things like that. And I know firsthand that this would benefit a great portion of those 50,000 that live here. I've been able to help them, and I'm grateful to do that, and I would personally be incredibly grateful to you guys to help us get this done. They need it. They deserve it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Next speaker, please. We have about two minutes left.
Hi. My name is Chester Leleah. I'm a combat vet, Vietnam vet, combat. I was disabled since 1981, 100%. But the reason why I'm here is, is not... The VA has its own problem. I think we all need to come together and build this clinic because I was on the bus from here to LA with a bunch of these veterans, like, some of them are 80 years old. The bus, the heater don't work, the air conditioner work. We got stuck on the highway for like nine hours. So we talk about Pop Cat, all these things. Can we all come together and work together instead of coming here and fighting for... I wasn't Vietnam.
Sir, go ahead and address the council.
So please, Mayor, can we come together and work together and make this happen? Instead of all this loop, loop, all this back and forth? Can we do that? Please? Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
I had a long speech, but I kind of cut it short.
We have about just over a minute left.
I know that.
And the clock is running.
I have this right here, this poo-poo's, his and his people's saying that the kit fox is a problem. It's not. Right here, it says, "Endangered kit fox thrives in Bakersfield." Yes, you read that right. They have the best care here in Bakersfield than anywhere else in the state. They have a higher rate of life within the city because their predators can't get to There is no problem. Things get built in this county all the time. The kit foxes are taken care of. They are well-fed. All right? We take care of them. We move them as necessary. They put them in a new home. They're fine. So get off the kit fox, okay? They are not a problem. Here is... I will present this.
Thank you.
And my card is on it. I would like to be notified if they decide they want to do another claim.
Sir.
And I've got a note. This also is from the VFW. They wanted me to turn this in.
Thank you. You can give that to the clerk.
One final thing. I got 35 seconds. A note to Peter Cohen. I hope you and one of your lawyers is here to hear this. Stop using your "holding up progress for Bakersfield veterans." That's your new name. It's not "progress for Bakersfield veterans." It's "holding up progress." All right?
Sir, thank you.
Okay. 15 seconds. Veterans of this county are fed up with your using VA money to feed your golden goose. We are no longer on the sideline. We will fight with this, whatever it takes to get your attention. Thank you.
Sir, thank you.
Hillary Walker.
Would you... Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Who do I give that to?
At this time... At this time, is there anyone who would like to rebut in opposition? Five minutes for a rebuttal if there is anyone. Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to rebut in support? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Gray.
Good evening, vets. I am so proud of you and blessed to have you here tonight. I, I would respectfully like to ask the attorney that wrote, brought forth all of the ERI, EIR data tonight, if he's ever served or been in combat for our country. I asked that question because tonight, Mayor Go, when she said something about you all in the very beginning of our meeting, she, her comment was that our vets, "Thank you for who is here tonight because you purchased our freedom." Freedom is something that we seem to be lacking a lot of these days, that we're running short on. And it is a disgrace that our vets have been treated so poorly in our city, by no fault of our city. No fault of our city, we, we are working and, and fighting alongside of you for this clinic, but we have come up against roadblocks from the existing owner that continues to refuse to update his own clinic, but continues to want to collect the hundreds of thousands of dollars that he's collecting.
$400,000.
A month. I know, $400,000 a month. I think the public needs to be very aware of that. So it's all about a bottom line issue for this gentleman. It's not about your care. I really appreciated the men that stepped up, especially you, Mr. Henderson. Is that correct, your last name, or did I get that wrong? Young man.
Anderson.
Anderson, Mr. Anderson. As a younger vet, to give a new, another perspective, I have a very good friend that deals with PTSD from the Vietnam War and it's, it's an ugly thing to have to live with. But I know there's help for you and I know there's hope. So don't ever give up.
If the guys walking around wearing these bracelets of our friends.
Um, sir.
Yeah, it's, there is hope. So I want you all to just continue to hang on to that hope, but I just want to tell you that I am in strong support of our veterans in this community. In fact, my father at 103 is still living as a World War II combat vet. And a lot of vets today don't have the, the means to be able to find better healthcare, so they have to depend on the vet system to get it. So these kit foxes, I mean, when you start putting, sir, kit foxes and bumblebees and other species ahead of these men that purchased your freedom, there is something crazy going on in this world, something crazy. So I fully support you. The kit foxes will take care of themselves. I used to have one that slept in my front yard every night. So I know that. So we're good. So we, I strongly support you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is in my ward, and so I will make the motion to deny the appeals and uphold the planning commission's certification of the environmental impact report and approval of site plan review number 21-0399. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Weir.
Well, I just want to say I thank you all for coming out tonight. I know there's been at least six to eight times where I've gone to a ribbon cutting or is coming, or is coming, at least six or eight times over the last 10, 12 years. And it doesn't ever seem to get here. And it's, it's very frustrating for us that we can't help you with this because somebody in this room, somebody in this room can't afford to lose this. And the more he drags it out, the more money he makes.
That's right.
I have great confidence in our staff. I think they do a great job. They don't come out and say, "We have an EIR," if they don't have an EIR. What's that, really, what has that got to do with this? Because when I set up here, what, I don't see the law, I see a travesty of the law. Absolute travesty. And I hope you're, I hope you're doing well, but I want to tell you, I, I can't even imagine being in your position. I can't, there's no amount of money that would make me do what you do. So hopefully tonight, we can vote for the veterans that are sitting here and the thousands more that are in Kern County. And if you want to send us a couple thousand pages more, it's okay. It's okay, but tonight's the night. And tonight, we're going to make a decision, and I don't care how many letters you send. We need to move on.
Thank you, Councilmember.
So I, I absolutely support this.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Cora.
First and foremost, I want to thank each and every one of you for your service and everyone in the room who has served for our country. I benefit from the freedoms that you fought for. And just as Councilmember Gray's father was in World War II, I'm also the grandchild of a World War II veteran. And the way my grandfather went and learned about the world and brought his learnings back and set me and, and my family up for success, I know you've done the same for countless people, your own families beyond the ripple effects we see. And we simply do not go far enough to take care of our veterans. And I am glad to see this in front of us and glad we can take a decision and show our support for seeing better care come to our veterans who are here in the city of Bakersfield in Kern County and the surrounding rural communities who will benefit. This will go far beyond even our city for our younger veterans. I cannot begin to imagine the physical, the mental, the emotional toll and all the treatment that it takes to, to address the things you've seen and, and bringing that home. So I just want to thank you again for your service and offer my support as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Cora. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all too, for those who have served our country. Thank you so much for your sacrifice. Like some of us behind this dais, I too, well, I am what is known as a military brat. Grew up on Camp Pendleton. Father was a Marine. We had several members of our family who served. And I, I just want to make a couple comments. One, that, you know, when we have, when we find ourselves in battle as a country, our active-duty military do not have 14 years to make their decision to go to war. And I think it's incredibly unfair that this process has taken so long. My father has had many challenges that he has, he's had to work through medically. And I have joined him on a couple of those trips down to LA. And I think it's pretty disingenuous that we're having conversations about reductions in vehicle miles traveled and reductions in GHG. We know that the biggest polluters are along our highways as we use gas-powered vehicles. And so let's talk about all of the reduction in GHG emissions that folks will now be using to get from their houses in Bakersfield to a clinic right here in Bakersfield to get the services that they need. I think this is a clear example of what CEQA is not and should not be used for. I think it's incredibly frustrating that this document that is intended to actually reduce environmental impacts has been used to stop developments that are so important to the services that are critical for the health and safety of our community. So I just want to go on the record saying that, because I think it's incredibly frustrating for our community, I hope that the state and the governor will continue to push for reform on CEQA so that we continue, we can continue to support projects like this. I support our veterans and I support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Veterans, thank you so much for your service. So sorry that you've been subjected to these delays. And then to all of you veteran supporters, I see so many of you who represent our veteran support groups out in the audience, thank you also for always being there for our veterans. And with that, we have a motion. Please cast your votes. Are we having an issue?
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Thank you all for your participation tonight. We have mother, other matters to consider if this would be the appropriate time if some of you need to leave. We'll just take a pause before we start. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break and then we'll come back for 8B. Thank you, veterans, again. Let's reconvene. If you have further conversation, I just ask you to take it outside into the lobby, please. Okay, item 8B has already been opened. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you very much. If I could get the slides up for, so I'm, I'm just going to go through this really quick and get to Councilmember Freeman's questions, but just for, for proximity, so you know where it's located, it's near Penzinger and South Allen Road. And north would, this, this is laying on its side, but you can see here, it's going to be two track maps consisting of 497 single-family residential lots. It will include about a four and a quarter, four and three-quarter acre park, two and a half acre drill island, and an acre and a half drainage basin. And so you can see how it's laid out there. And if you have any questions, Councilmember, the applicants here or staff can answer those.
Am I permitted to ask a question?
And what is your recommendation, staff?
I'm sorry, yes, thank you. And staff's recommendation is for approval of the general plan amendment, zone change, zoning modification, and the planned unit development.
Thank you. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close this, oh, I'm so sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Whitney Jackson with McIntosh &amp; Associates, and I'm here representing the project. We're in favor of it. And I know you said, Councilmember Freeman, that it looked like barracks, the first layout we kind of had. So we have completely changed it. We gave the community park. There's passeos throughout and connecting meandering sidewalks throughout the whole site. So it's going to be very walkable, neighborhood-friendly. We did outreach. Everybody else in the community seems very excited about this project. And I can answer any questions if you need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in support? Seeing none, consent calendar public hearing, item 8B is now closed and I return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm just curious, what are these lot sizes? And did you have some elevations and stuff? Looks like a good project, but I'm curious to what it really looks like.
The lot sizes will be reduced, some of those, the lowest lot size will be 3,345 square feet for lot size, which on a net acreage just comes down to about 10 dwelling units an acre, I believe. I believe there's elevations attached as, as part of the PUD with the PUD resolution, planned unit development resolution.
But you don't have them.
I do not have them on the slideshow, no.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Freeman.
Well, this is a vastly improved site plan from the previous project, so thank you for that. Look at it again. I love the park in the middle. Is that a private park? It's a public. Okay. So there is, or is there an HOA here or not?
Yes, there will be an HOA. Do you don't think there is?
There is an HOA.
Councilman Freeman, do you have questions for her? We'll have her come up to the mic.
Yeah, yeah. But the HOA, so it's a public park, so the HOA is not responsible, or are they responsible for the maintenance of the park?
I think we are going to dedicate the park to the city, but the developer will be actually constructing the park. So it won't just be a vacant site. So we will have the developer construct the site and then dedicate the park to the city, but there will be an HOA to maintain all of the passeos, lawns, and all the shared greenways maintenance.
Including the lawns?
Yes.
Oh, well, that'll, that'll be.
Well, around the front, not the rear yards.
That's still very, that's, that's very nice. I mean, it's, it, I just can't tell you what a difference this project is, a good project. And so I'm glad you took the effort to redesign it like this.
And we have floor plans and elevations. The product size ranges from about 3,000 square feet to, I think we have a few lots that are 5,000 square feet. So they are smaller lots, they'll be more affordable than your average 6,500 square-foot lot.
What are the average widths and depths of the lot? What's a typical lot wide and deep?
I would say they're about 45 feet wide, less than 100.
By 80 or something like that?
80, yeah. 40 by 80-ish.
Okay. And I imagine a number of them are two-story.
Well, yeah, we don't, it's going to depend on the owner, whoever, you know, wants to buy the home, but most likely, two stories make more sense. But we have a lot of elevations.
To get the square footage, probably. Okay, well.
And they'll all have garages and they have shared, shared driveways to save space and there's off-street parking.
Is this a for-sale or a for-rent project?
It'll be for-sale.
For-sale. Well, this is a real, for the council's benefit, you can get 10 to the acre, this is about the best you're ever going to do to create affordable housing and single-family housing. So hopefully this will be successful and be a model and hopefully the costs are not so high that you can actually sell them for something reasonable.
Right. That's the intent.
Okay. With that said, I'll make a motion to approve the project or approve the GPA, that sort of change.
Councilmember Gray.
Just real quickly, I was curious at what the price range will be for these homes.
We can't say yet because it's based on market rate.
Okay.
And who knows what the market's going to do within the next year.
Right, okay.
Or two.
Okay. And then when this park is turned over to the city, then is it the city's responsibility to build that park out?
No, our developers has agreed to build it out in the beginning. And then dedicate it after.
That is great news. That's great news. Okay.
And actually, the development just one block south of here has a vacant park site that's been there for over 10 years. So those neighbors are happy that they're going to be able to walk across the street to this park and use it before theirs is ever constructed.
Well, that's what I was hoping to hear because I know about those vacant park sites. So that's good news. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. You have a motion?
Yeah, I was trying to make the motion. To support staff's recommendation, approve the project.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business item 12A, resolution setting dates of regular city council meetings, department budget presentations, and budget hearings for January through December 2024.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is our annual meeting adoption. We have followed the same pattern as this last year, so we have consistency in meetings. We were thoughtful about conferences and other potential conflicts and represents our recommended calendar for the coming year.
Thank you. Any comments from the council? If not, Vice Mayor.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
If a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of comments tonight, right off the bat. Just want to share with my colleagues and to the community that the homeless point-in-time count has been scheduled for January 24th at 4:00 AM, and volunteers can sign up at And I'd like to encourage all of my colleagues to join me and hundreds of volunteers and the mayor, who off regularly goes, to join us to count those individuals who are unsheltered in metropolitan Bakersfield and throughout the county. It is a good first-hand look of what our residents who are unhoused experience every single day in our city. A few reports from committees that I chair, from the Housing and Homelessness Committee, we have made a referral to staff to bring to the full council a resolution in support of partnering with the county of Kern for the implementation of both Care Court and SB 43, and in opposition to any, any extension of implementation of SB 43 or Care Court in support of a phased approach to implement both of those processes. For those of you who aren't aware, SB 43 is legislation that changes the law related to involuntary holds and conservatorship rules that will help us address some of the issues with those who are harder to reach in our homeless community. Also, we directed staff to develop a one-year plan for 2024 with, including identifying a goal and strategies to develop new units of housing within a year, and asking the staff in the Economic and Community Development Department to come back to the committee within the next few months in order for us to vet out that plan. And from our Budget and Finance Committee, we were able to receive recommendations for the EOA program, and we also heard a report regarding impact fees as it relates to affordable housing development and made some recommendations there that will be coming to the full council soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to say, I think it's really worthwhile for the whole council. The reason I wanted everyone to see that site plan is to see what kind of developments our developers are doing. So that was actually helpful, not just to me, it really helped me. But I, I want my colleagues to see, when we're trying to create affordable housing, if someone's actually going to put a project together that might do it. So there's some benefit to the visual. And I also want to sort of apologize for, previously I said, "Why?" But the ward number, while I was misreading my own notes because my penmanship is so bad, the ward number was right in front of me, right on the agenda. These guys have me going, "What is with this guy? You know, is he 80 years old or something?" But I have very poor pen... I meant to say, why can't we put the tier when we're saying we're taking seven of these into the district? What tier will they be in? That's what my notes said. I unfortunately said ward. Is there a reason we can't, when we take them in, say, "You're tier 543," or let us know?
I can certainly ask staff about the tier levels. There are multiple levels. And whether or not a specific consolidated maintenance district area has a variety of those tier levels, that may complicate it. But if it's a single-tier level rate that gets paid by that one particular address...
You don't have to tell me how much you're charging them, but when we're going to take this area into, we have to assign a tier level to take it in. To know what's going to go on the tax bill.
We do, and there's collaboration between Rick and Parks Department on what that tier level is.
You guys talk together. It'd be nice to know when it comes...
Yes.
I am assuming most of them are going to be the highest tier because we standardize it pretty much. Everybody gets a park to help maintain, their tierials. Rick has done a good job of standardizing that. It's all looking a lot better these days. We don't have 50 varieties of bushes for people to try to maintain. It looks much better having simple hedges and stuff we can... Okay, well, if that can be done. Sorry about the misreading my notes. And my last comment is, I just wanted to say what a fantastic program this United Way thing is. This is really, really impressive. I love it. I just, I'm wondering, are you, are you somehow in charge of this, Councilmember Arias? Can I, can I maybe ask a question? As well as the things you teach here and provide, I love the financial literacy because I think, I mean, that ought to be a required course in all of our high schools. I don't know why it isn't. But as part of that, I hope you include, it said budgeting, but that people learn how to do a budget because most people, I'm fighting with all my kids, the same way, they get out of high school or college, they have to go on their own, they don't know how to do a budget. I mean, they real, I mean, a budget, how much you're going to spend and how much you're making? And do the two meet each other? It's pretty simple. It's simple to me, but it's not that simple to someone who's never done it and has lived at home. "Oh, I got to food, oh, I got to take care of my car, a car insurance." You know, start adding it all up. Oops, how much do I got to make? That will affect future decisions, where they go to college, what might careers. It affects a lot of things if we teach that younger. But the people who come for help here, if they need help with their income tax, they probably would benefit by knowing how to do, you know, household budgets. So thank you for what it's worth.
Yeah.
Councilmember Arias, would you like to respond to his question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The short answer is yes. And it's one of the many programs that we offer at United Way. We do this in partnership with actually several banks who help sponsor the program. But I will take this as an invitation to have another breakfast sitting down with you. So we can talk about it.
Okay. Great. Well, this is a great program.
Thank you.
Touche.
Councilmember Core.
Thank you, Mayor. November is recognized as Sick Awareness and Appreciation Month in the state of California as well as other states. And that is because the founder of the Sikh faith tradition, we recognize their birthday, Gurudhanak, the birth of our founder, in the month of November. But during this month, during Sick Awareness and Appreciation Month, the Department of Justice of the United States brought forward the highest form of sick awareness with foiling a plot and charging an Indian government employee who lives in India and who directed a plot from India to murder a US citizen on US soil. Now, just a few weeks ago, from this seat, I shared the news of the assassination of a Sikh Canadian citizen and the real, the growing danger that the freedom of, we've talked a lot about freedoms today, but the real growing danger of having the freedom of expression and the freedom of speech that we so value and I so value. And our freedom of expression is essential to our democracy, and it must be respected by other nations who claim to be democracies. These failed attempts at taking out folks who are just voicing their freedom of speech, voicing their concerns for their own communities, you know, this is trying to instill a fear in Sikhs across different diasporas. But it also confirms the pattern of extrajudicial killings that have been seen against Sikhs in all, everywhere, really, in all countries. And often I'm asked, you know, to explain why the Sikh community is so large in places like the city of Bakersfield or Kern County or in the Central Valley. I think all of our wards have a sizable Sikh community in it. But within Ward 7, we have the third-highest concentration of Sikhs in the state of California. And today, you have an answer to that question in the news that's delivered by the US Department of Justice. Home was no longer safe for folks who were advocating for their own sovereignty, for their own faith, for their, for the freedom to practice their own faith in countries like India. And so Sikhs settled where they saw each other and found familiarity with one another. Genocides were also orchestrated against Sikhs, and this is not unique to the Sikh community within India. Other minorities were targeted in the same ways. But families like my own sought to live in a real democracy that would protect their rights as granted by the amendments in the Constitution of our own country that I live by and I uphold and I value so very much. And today, from the platform that I hold on our council, I implore our state and federal officials to also call out and, and call out what we're seeing that the US Department of Justice is bringing forward. With this high concentration of Sikhs within your state districts, within your federal districts, you too should be just as concerned about the Sikh residents and citizens of places like Bakersfield, Kern County, Ward 7, and all of our wards. You know, we have people here who were firsthand victims of the genocide that took place against Sikhs in Punjab, who have now migrated, and our political refugees of that genocide who now reside here. We have mothers, elderly mothers, who I meet every week at our gurdwar, at our place of worship, whose sons never return from these extrajudicial killings. This is a serious matter, and it must be taken seriously at every level of government. And so again, I implore my colleagues, my, our state and our federal elected officials to, to really have the US Department of Justice extend this and say, "Who else is in danger? Who, what other residents within our country, citizens, are being plotted against?" Because this is a real fear, and I've received countless calls today from people from within my own community. And just as I advocate for any other community, I would advocate for them in the same ways because really, this freedom is something that's granted to us in a country. And I'm glad that this case is being brought forward, but I wanted to take the time to highlight this from, from our city council platform as well. That's, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take time to, first of all, thank all the colleagues here on, on the dais tonight, my colleagues, for approving this letter, very well-written, Mayor Go, to support, in support of HR 6089, which is the Energy Choice Act that David Valadaro has been putting forth in Congress. I think it's really, really important that we stand together in unity as a community, as a county. I've talked to county supervisors also that are, that they have put their own letter together so that we can be in support of our energy. As our pastor tonight came and prayed, he prayed, he thanked the Lord for the resources, the natural resources we have in our, in our county. We're very, very fortunate. We can't take them for granted. But they are trying to be stripped away from us. So with that, I'm just thankful that we could all come into agreement on that, to support our energy here and to prohibit state or local government from banning the energy sources that we want to use instead of this foolishness of by 2035, we've got to have all these electric vehicles. That's going to be very expensive on the taxpayers' back. We can't afford it. And so I am just really hopeful that our congressman can get this passed and we can have that freedom in Kern County to be able to do as, as we see fit for our own industries. Thank you so much, Mayor. Good job.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Homelessness looms as California's leading issue. We just hear this all the time from our residents all over. We're also hearing an increasing concern about quality-of-life crimes. I'll be representing us, traveling actually, right after this meeting with the League of California Cities, CalCities, prioritizing our topics for the year. And we'll be also doing that with the big-city mayors. And I know that these two issues, we will continue to advocate together, all of us on this dais. I know get concerns about those same issues. Public, just know that we are continuing to fight for you, and we want this to be a safe community for all of us. With that, I don't see any other requests. We stand adjourned at 7:29.